All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting for October 10th to order. Let the record reflect the starting time of 5:30. With that, Clerk Voight, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
You have seven members present, you have a quorum of the committee.
All right, fantastic. Vice President Wood on the meeting minute from September 26, 2022.
Thank you, President Hussein. On the minutes of September 26, I would move as written.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to agenda item number four. This is public comment on agenda items. Eligible for public comment tonight are the two resolutions on the agenda. We have one that deals with the introduction and setting of a public hearing for Chapter 13 amendment, sorry, to Chapter 1300, that deals with marijuana operations here in the city of Lansing. And then we also have a resolution to set a public hearing, and this would be in consideration of a substantial amendment to our fiscal year 2020/2021 annual action plan to include home ARP allocation plan, and ARP stands for American Rescue Plan. So with that, if there are folks in the audience that would like to speak to one of the two agenda items, feel free to come on up. We do take folks on a first-come, first-served basis. All right.
I'm Norma Bauer, and I just want to know if I can comment on the agenda itself.
On the agenda itself, yes.
Okay, so because I have this many letters of support for the petition that the People's Council presented last month, and I'm not going to submit them tonight because they're not here to decide that they want those submitted tonight. But it would be nice if someone on the council could give us a report on progress towards transparency in city government. And the other thing that I wonder...
Yeah, so if I could stop you just for a minute. So when we talk about the agenda itself, this really is a time to talk about the two resolutions that are on this agenda. With regards to transparency, we do have a public comment period as part of our city council meeting, and anything governmental related is absolutely eligible for comment at that time.
Okay, so I can't comment on adding that to the agenda?
Oh, you want that added to this agenda. We can certainly talk about that at the next meeting. Does that make sense? In terms of the transparency piece?
If the part of the city council meeting is to put public comment at the end, it'll be too late for you to respond to it.
No, and I understand that. What I'm trying to do is follow process with regards to the fact that this is an opportunity to speak to items that are on the agenda. So again, this is public comment on agenda items for tonight's committee of the whole meeting.
So the answer to my first question is no, you can't discuss the agenda.
No, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Doris Witherspoon with the City of Lansing Department of Economic Development and Planning, and I'm here for item number five C, setting a public hearing.
Doris, if I can stop you just for a minute. What we're going to actually do, we should be to that item very quickly, and we were hoping to bring you down into the well for a quick presentation. Thanks so much. All right, do we have anybody else that wants to speak to an agenda item from the public? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jody Washington, East Side of Lansing. I just want to speak very briefly about the public hearing for five C. I'm going to continue to beat this drum that we have to start having some real planning for this city. Everything cannot be about public housing, low-income housing. Not that I'm against that, but we have so much of it already, and so much of it is already in disrepair. And I was reading in the documents where they want to start making sure that the Gillespies and the Ides are getting incentives so they can build more and more and more. We have to stop the downward spiral of our median household income in this city. There's a reason businesses won't locate here, and it's because all we are worrying about and all we are attracting are lower-income people. I'm not against them, I work with them every single day, but as you read what different organizations submit, please remember, they make their living off that. So we need to have people with vision that will look at Lansing holistically and not in silos, and we have to stop this downward spiral. Regional discussions have to begin. Lansing cannot absorb any more of what we have, and I'm just saying, I have a goiter, I'm not about to cry. And so I'm just saying, be cognizant, these are coming forward week after week after week, and people pleading on behalf of the people that are houseless, and then they want to depend on the HMIS system, which is utterly broken. We have people that are in there twice, we have people that show they've been homeless 100 times. It's broken. It's not working, and you all will be getting more and more information about that as the weeks go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to either one of the two agenda items on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. We are going to move to number five, discussion action item B. This is a resolution to introduce and set a public hearing for October, it's the 24th, sorry, and this would be in consideration of amending Chapter 1300 that deals with marijuana operations. Folks have seen us from time to time open this ordinance back up. Typically, the amendments that we are asked to consider and to potentially approve deals with changes at the state level. And so to ensure that we are reflecting some of those changes and making sure that our ordinance comports with state statute, again, we are asked to consider and potentially approve amendments from time to time. And so we have a series of amendments in front of us. Those amendments deal with everything from new license types to accessory uses and things of that nature. So in any event, we do have Lisa hanging with us tonight from the city attorney's office. I do see the clerk, Chris Swope, in the back, if you would like to join Lisa, he's more than happy, or more than welcome to. And Lisa, we're going to turn the floor over to you to give us a quick overview of the changes, but before we do, Vice President Wood.
It's, President Hussein, it's my understanding, because there is some zoning involved in this, that the public hearing, we need to change the date to November 14 to comply.
And I guess that would be a question to Jim. I know for a fact that we do need to look at November 14 for item C. So Jim, are we looking at November 14 for this as well? They did. The planning board took a look at this, I believe, on August 8.
I think it's...
So it's 30 days after that, correct?
It is a zoning ordinance, it's under the zoning ordinance, and those do require 15-day notice of the public hearing, so that would push us further out than the two weeks.
So what we're looking at is introducing and setting a public hearing for November 14, correct?
Yep.
All right, Lisa, you're up.
Thank you. So just to talk about the changes, I'll kind of go through section by section, and I'm happy to take questions either as we go along or at the end, whatever you prefer. Section 1300.02, there's just some definitional changes. A new license type of marijuana educational research license was added, and the definition of marijuana microbusiness was also expanded to include Class A, which is a new license type. Moving on to section 1300.04, this section amends the definition of applicant to reflect what's currently the practice of the state, and it also amends the insurance requirements to expand access to coverage. In going through the licensing process, it was discovered that there's not a lot of insurance agencies that are able to give this coverage, and so this would help expand the potential companies that are able to offer this insurance. Section 1300.09 adds a drive-through as a permissible accessory use for marijuana sales that's with zoning approval, so zoning evaluates and makes a determination. Section 1300.11 assigns the zoning of the new license-type educational research facility. And then section 1300.17 codifies the mayor's 2020-01 executive order as it relates to temporary events. Previously, this council did not specifically opt out of temporary events, so it was deemed that they opted in, and so this was the process that was developed so that those applications could be evaluated and approved or declined. It also adds a fee for those license, or for those permit applications so that those, the various departments that need to review things are able to do so, and we can recoup the cost for that.
Okay, and just a, so a quick question. In terms of the educational research facility, so when you say assigned zoning, so those will have the same, or fall underneath the same zoning categories as an example, compliance centers and processors?
Yeah, so it's the same zoning as safety compliance processors and secure transporters, which they are allowed in industrial, mixed-use, and urban flex.
Okay, perfect. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Does this new amendment allows drive-through facilities as well?
Yep, that's contained in section 1300.09. It's with zoning approval.
All right, thanks for the question. Vice President Wood.
I did.
Oh, whoever. He's being courteous, Vice President Wood.
Thank you. And speaking back to the drive-through, is that a state requirement, or is that something we're just adding to our ordinance?
I don't think it's a state requirement, but there came about some unclarity about our ordinance and whether it was expressly allowed or prohibited, and we have a couple of places that are using buildings that had a pre-existing drive-through window that met the requirements, so it's kind of been something that we've been struggling with, to clarify.
Okay, because I do remember when we had this discussion that those that are currently here, we did not support having drive-through. That was not something that we were looking at supporting, so that's why I'm asking.
And if I remember correctly, the ordinance doesn't, at the time, I don't think it was written into the ordinance because the state already did not allow drive-through, and now the state does allow drive-through, so it's unclear under our ordinance, so this is seeking that clarity.
Okay, and then my next question is, and again, we were led to believe when we went through this before, dealing with opting in or out of the special events, that we did not want to have special permit, special event permits. And so this is codifying an executive order, correct?
That's correct, because the ordinance as it stands now does not specifically prohibit temporary events. They are deemed to be opted in, and therefore a process needed to be created by which the license could be reviewed and given in an appropriate circumstance.
So there's nothing in this that I can read unless there's something in the permit process when we're talking about a permit for a special event on city-owned property, and let's use Lewdado Park as an example, Lewdado Park. As large as that is, if I were having an event there, doesn't mean that people walking the River Trail or other things wouldn't still be able to co-mingle into a situation where you might have children and the such at an event like this, correct?
This provision in the ordinance requires the city attorney, the police department, the fire department, and the Parks and Recreation Department Director to review the application, and I do believe that those are things that are evaluated at the time when determining whether to recommend approval or not, but I would have to ask specifically that department head.
Okay, if we could get that information back, you know, by the time we have the public hearing on this. The other question that I have on this is, does this prohibit at a special event the sale of marijuana at an event? I know the answer, but I'm on it for the record.
I am not, since my office hasn't dealt with any special events, I'm not an expert on special events.
I can follow up on that as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Spatafor.
Just, it's a really mundane question. We did have a member of the public ask why we spell marijuana with an H. Could you elaborate for the record why we do that here in the city of Lansing?
I can. The state of Michigan spells marijuana with an H, and so for consistency purposes, we do the same.
Got it.
And that was in the voter-driven initiative, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, and the clerk knows that that was going to be one of my questions, because when that was approached that night, we talked about actually addressing that this, tonight, right, as part of this process. Yes, Councilman?
All right, I just, I'm looking at the cannabis regulatory agency's guidelines on a special use permit. I don't know if you want the answer tonight or not, but there are, there has to be security plans, diagrams of the events, entry access, much like an event with a beer tent would be. So while the smell of alcohol doesn't permeate quite as much as the smell of marijuana, it's not an event into which folks that aren't participants in the event can wander accidentally, at least in theory, according to the state application. I did not know that, but I can share this with you all if you want.
So in theory, defined space, worded off, sectioned off in some way, and no co-mingling. Okay. Do we have other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, Vice President Wood.
I would move to amend the resolution that we have in front of us to read. The public hearing will be held on November 14, and with that, I would move setting the public hearing.
All right, so on the amended motion with the public hearing being set for November 14, any further discussion? Seeing, you moved and amended?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So with that being said, I don't see any hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, we appreciate it. That takes us to discussion action item C. This is a resolution to set up a public hearing in consideration of a substantial amendment. Ms. Witherspoon, if you want to come on down. This is for our fiscal year 2020/2021 annual action plan to include home ARP allocation plan. We've done this before, and we've had to essentially substantially amend these documents in order, as an example, to receive additional funds, allocate funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. That is the case tonight, and so we are going to turn the floor over to Ms. Witherspoon so she can explain what the substantial amendment is for, what the dollars received in terms of dollar amount will be, and what those dollars can be used for. So Ms. Witherspoon, you have the floor. Vice President Wood, go ahead.
Just for clarification, the document that we have in front of us, we have a memo from Barb Kimmel, and I would like, because this is on the public website and that, to clarify, that there is a statement in here that says council will approve the substantial amendment on November 28. Council will consider it is presumptuous to approve, to put in there that we will approve something when we haven't had that, made that determination yet. So for the public, we've not made that determination.
All right, we appreciate the clarification. Ms. Witherspoon. Can I stop you real quick? Could you, first of all, make sure the green light's on, and then maybe pull the mic just a little bit closer?
Oh, no.
There you go. All right, fantastic, thank you.
And I have glasses on. All right, good evening, everyone. So the, in 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan to address the continued impact of COVID-19, and so the home ARP, American Rescue Plan, is addressing the need for homelessness assistance and supportive services. The city of Lansing will receive $2,784,822 to use to address this, the home ARP. But in order to do that, we will have to make a substantial amendment to our fiscal year 2021 annual action plan. That's our plan that was July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. So we'll have to make a substantial amendment to that plan. And it's not any different than when we go through our normal process for the allocation of our federal funds. And as many of you remember, when we received the COVID dollars, we had to make a substantial amendment to our 2019-2020 plan. These dollars, the components of the home ARP allocation plan is that we have to have a consultation, meetings, and we've had two of those virtual meetings on September 15 before the continuum of care, which is required, and then on September 16 for other stakeholders' department, state departments, and specific agencies that were, that needed to be a part of this. Within both of those consultation processes, it was almost 100 participants on the virtual call, and we did receive a lot of feedback on that. There's a 15-day comment period, the comment period, the public notice will be published in the Lansing City Pulse on the 26, and the comment period starts on the 27, October 27 through November 14. So we will have a copy of the home ARP allocation plan on the city's website, so people will have an opportunity to comment there if they don't plan on attending the public hearing. I usually send out a notice to our continuum of care, and then we have a couple of other mailing lists, which consists probably about 400 people or so, and so they will all receive a copy of the notice. There are specific eligible activities and qualifying populations that is part of this process. The eligible activities are home ARP rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, non-congregate shelters, nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance, which is limited to 5% is the cap, and admin and planning, which is 15% cap, but I believe we did a 10% on here. We do have a tentative budget for this. Like I said, people will have an opportunity to comment on the draft allocation plan. Oh, and I forgot to mention that we are working with Wade Trim Consultants to assist with preparing this allocation plan. The qualifying populations include the homeless, at-risk-of-homelessness persons fleeting or attempting to flee domestic violence, persons at greatest risk of homeless, of housing instability, and veterans or families of veterans. Some of the needs that were identified during these consultation process was to increase the supply of affordable housing, development, shelter facilities, homeless prevention assistance, employment assistance, and capacity building and organizational development. As I mentioned, the amount is $2,784,822, and the proposed budget, we have a funding amount of $300,000 for acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, $500,000, development of affordable rental housing, $1,539,251, nonprofit operating, $139,241, nonprofit capacity building, $27,848, admin and planning, $278,482, and that equals the total. The draft of our allocation plan, as I mentioned, will be available on October 27, and I would be glad to answer any questions if we have any.
And that was timely. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for that, I appreciate it. So we're asked to today set a public hearing for a document that's not ready yet.
The public hearing, it's the, the document will be ready for, prior to November 14.
It will be ready on the 20, what did you say it was?
27.
So that's, how many days? Well, 15, is that 15 days for the public comment period? Is that? I'm just trying to...
If it's ready October 26, the public hearing will be November 14.
Yeah.
Cover 15 days.
Cover 15 days.
Yes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. And I think this is good stuff. I will note that it's unfortunate that council wasn't involved in this, since we did have a ad hoc committee on housing and public safety, and a lot of the recommendations that we came out of our committee are kind of a part of this. So that, that's a little surprising that we weren't asked to participate in this and putting this together, but I just wanted to be sure about the, about the dates. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there other questions? Vice President Wood.
So Doris, have the agencies already been identified that will be receiving these dollars?
No.
And what will be the process to determine how these dollars will be allocated?
There's going to be an RFPQ process.
Okay. We've all received a letter from Ms. Wakefield, who had some real concerns about Holy Cross Services. And so I don't know whether your office has seen that letter yet.
I haven't seen any letter from...
We'll make sure that that's forwarded to you so you can take a look at it. Because I would, you know, I think some of the things that we've heard, we need to make sure that these dollars are being spent appropriately and getting the services that need for the people that need those services.
Right, right. And I just want to say, I apologize if city council didn't receive any notice. I know you guys are on a mailing list, so I'm not sure. I know you received information when we started working on the consolidated plan. I mean, I made sure you guys were on there, but I just assumed that you did receive notification regarding that, so.
I think what, Councilmember Spitzley, and she can always speak for herself, but I think what she was referring to is, as you knew about this, getting in touch with the chair of the committee and saying, we'd like to come and make a presentation and get some of your ideas. I think that's what she was speaking to.
And it certainly wasn't against you.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't taking it personally.
Okay, it just seems to me that there is, you know, a lack of collaboration. I mean, it's not like it was a secret that we were having this ad hoc committee on housing and resident safety, and so then to come out and, you know, and we've had a lot of these people that were, that you talked to, we talked to as well, and then to have this report come out and have some of the same, almost verbatim, the same comments that we put in our recommendations is just, just a little jarring to me. We've got to work better, and we just don't seem to be, we don't seem to be working together, and it's, it's kind of disappointing. And so... And it's, it's, it's kind of disappointing. And so that, that's my only comment about it.
Okay. Well, I will make sure that you guys receive copies of the public notice so you, you will have an opportunity to comment whether it's, you know, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Brown and then Vice President Wood. Go ahead. You sure? Vice President Wood.
Just to follow up on what Councilmember Spitzley said. I think the other thing is, is that we did have your director into our meeting and would have thought that he would have brought that up during his time at the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, Council President. Well, thank you for being here this evening as well. So I know that to Councilwoman Wood had identified one letter with concern for some of the service providers' ability to deliver the service to our residents. In that same, I guess, vein, the $2.7 million, are you guys looking for that to be funding that the constituents and the people who really have a need get that into their hands? Or is it to fund some of these nonprofits additional on top of the ARPA dollars and the additional funds that they receive every year within Lansing?
Well, you know, like I said, I did talk about, you know, the process is going to be through an RFPQ. And I did identify what is proposed, you know, the proposed budget that we're looking at, you know, in terms of what activities and so forth, supportive services, acquisition, development. Because, you know, at these public hearings, you know, the first, the number one thing that was identified, just like when we did the consolidated plan, was affordable housing, you know. So I, I guess that, you know, we still need feedback. You know, like I said, this is tentative. We still need feedback from the community. We can't just, we've got to listen to what people are saying, our community needs. So I guess it just depends on that. We can present some information, but, you know, we still need to hear back from the community on things. And I just want to mention that also with any of our federal funds that we need to, we do an environmental review on all of these funds before we can actually spend them. And I'm responsible for doing the environmental reviews for our federal funds. So before we can spend any dollar amount, that is one thing that we have to do first of all, to clear the funds, you know. And many of the activities that we have proposed, some of them are exempt, of course, are administrative things. But some of the other ones will have to go through a process.
Well, thank you so much. So for an example, if we look at, I see that you've had participating Advent House Ministries. So if we have currently, let's say they are receiving funds from Human Relations Community Services for case management to help with rental assistance. Let's say that they've also received, you know, some ARPA dollars for the HERSA or whatever it may be. With this additional ARPA dollars, are you guys looking to say, hey, maybe for example, if this provider was qualified, that you would take $100,000 and it would go actually towards the people's rental assistance or people who need first and last month to transition out of red tag homes? Or would it be like, we're going to give it to these agencies who have, already have significant funding?
These dollars are specific. It clearly identifies the eligible activities that we can apply towards that. So I mean, if they're, if, if it's a qualifying population or if it's an eligible activity, that will be considered. But, you know, it's specific to certain activities and a qualifying population.
So for example, if it was rental assistance, how do you see, let's say if it was $100,000, how would you see the vision for your department administering? Or how those, that $100,000, how would that go towards rental assistance as an example?
Okay. I, I, I don't think I can talk for the department. I mean, I would just, I would need to just follow the process and see what happens. I mean, if someone is interested in applying for the funding and so forth, then, you know, we would have to evaluate it. I can't speak for the department, so.
Could I ask you then, what, what department are you representing this evening?
Economic Development and Planning.
Okay. Are they the ones who are administering the home ARPA dollars?
Right.
So, okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Do we have other?
You know, you know, I just want to make it clear that there's a process that we have to go through. I can't, you know, if rental assistance is something that is identified as a need, then that will, you know, that's what we will apply the funds for. But I said, you know, it's, it's, it's a process. As far as I know, that we're going to go through an RFPRQ. And, you know, I mean, what I'm sitting here saying right now could change from what happened, so.
Well, I do appreciate that. I'm just going off the document that you provided on page 30 of 41.
I don't know what document you're looking at.
Sorry, I was referring so far to my mom.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're actually conveying the document to Ms. Witherspoon. So if you want to, Mr. Brown, again, state the page number in the section that you're referring to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It would be of this memorandum that was provided about the home ARPA dollars. It would be page 30 of 41, which would be the back of the front page. And it says, priority needs for home ARPA allocation plan, case management, rental and utility assistance, employment assistance, job training, affordable housing specifically for large families, permanent supportive housing especially for seniors and families, shared training among providers. So that's where my questions were coming from, from the document.
Okay, okay. This, this on page 30, this is information that was obtained from the consultation meetings. So this is a summary of both of the public meetings that we had, virtual meetings.
Correct. So I'm just looking, I was just looking for the philosophy of the department. Let's say if one of these were adopted through the public hearing, are you all looking to, when Councilwoman Wood was asking about process, is just trying to understand, are you guys looking at, similar to the HRCS department, they put a RFP out and then people apply and the funding goes towards the nonprofit, the administration, and some goes to services? We've had quite a bit of funding for populations this year. So I was wondering, is it the intent of the 2.7 million to actually go to the constituents? We have several constituents calling who need first and last month's rental assistance to move for a red tag or unsafe place and so on and so forth. So are these funds, is a pool for people to access to actually, you know, deliver the service to the people? Or are you looking at saying, okay, we're going to have 10 nonprofits who are providing services and give them additional funding to deliver the services that they're already delivering?
If it, if, if it qualifies, you know, they, like I said, they will have to apply. If it qualifies, then we will consider it.
Okay. And I, I think the spirit of the questions are, we are hoping that we begin to, to convey some of these resources to the end user, as opposed to continuing to give the same groups money for administration, for building capacity to provide services they already provide. It would be nice to see these dollars actually trickle down to, again, the end user. So as an example, they could pay first of month, or I'm sorry, first and last month's rent. So I appreciate the comments and the questions. Do we have further questions, comments? Vice President Wood.
Doris, you talked about an environmental study that you do. Could you explain what that entails?
It's a, it's environmental review. Anytime we get, we receive federal funding, in order to use those funds, environmental review must be completed. There are five levels of environmental reviews. Those that are considered exempt, those that are considered categorically excluded, not subject to the, not subject to, which means not subject to the laws and authorities. Like for certain activities, we have to look at floodplain management, source, group toxic substance, substance, toxic waste, and, you know, things of that nature. So there are about 14 different laws and authorities that we need to review. And that comes under any type of activity that falls under categorically excluded subject to. Then there's environmental assessment, and then environmental impact statement. So many of our admin dollars or economic development, for example, will come under either exempt or categorically excluded, not subject to. But, you know, that's a process that we, that's anytime you have federal funds, you've got to make sure that you clear that before you can start using, you know, start using the federal funds, so.
And then Councilman Garza and then Councilman Spatafor.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. And thanks for being here. I guess I just want a little follow-up regarding Councilman Brown's questions. So when we talk about this federal funding, and I'm just curious, is there any kind of accountability or tracking mechanism? So if, if all this money does get put into different nonprofits, is there any accountability that these nonprofits are actually going and, and using the money to get to the end user? So is there any way to track that to make sure that it isn't going just for staffing and expanding their buildings and that type of stuff?
Like I said, we have to do a substantial amendment to our action plan. And one of the things that we, our department is responsible for is monitoring the grantees that we fund. So that would be the, I guess, the accountability, monitoring them to make sure that they're spending the dollars like they're supposed to.
All right. We have Councilman Spatafor and then Councilwoman Spitzley.
See, I promised Councilmember Wood and Committee the ways and means I wouldn't talk tonight, but here we are. So I'm looking at the notes, Doris, and I'm genuinely asking to note, I see you listed 55 attendees on the 15th and 33 on the 16th. And of those, I, I'm sorry, yeah, on the 15th, 33 were organizations, and on the 16th, 12 were organizations. Were there any individuals attending to provide input that weren't current recipients of grant funding for the city or organizational representatives? Like, were there people, individuals that would be served by these programs?
You know, both of those meetings were virtual, and I was on both of them. And so, you know, I, sometimes, I mean, I know a lot of people with organizations, but some names I didn't recognize, and they could have been individual people.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will you be coordinating with the HRCS department on, you know, making sure there's not an overlap of effort or that, you know, that the monies that you're going to be allocating after you review the RFQs, that the money you're going to be allocating is, you know, is not for services that we already provide and that they're for different services? I, I, I think this is great, and I appreciate you coming and explaining it to us. And I think the funding is great, and I think we need it. There's no question. But I'm always concerned when one department gets funding that really sounds like it should be in another department. And so I want to make sure, and that's why I'm asking, is will there be some, some consultation between departments to, to make sure that the money is not, is not going to be, basically that entities can't double dip?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and, and I certainly know how that can be kind of confusing, you know. And I know that there are certain parts of money that you can use for specific things. And so sometimes people, you know, they're, they're getting some funding to help them out, but a lot of times they don't know which pot of money is coming from where. But I, you know, for about six months, I was helping out in Human Relations and Community Services. I was, you know, reviewing some of the information. And I can, I can certainly understand the confusion that that can happen. So, you know, we will, I'll take that back to the department.
All right. Do we have other questions, comments? Councilman Jackson.
Just really quick, thinking about that. So if a agency is quote-unquote "double dipping," that means they have doubled the capacity to serve. I'm looking at Eve, for example, who takes in battered women and their families in domestic incidences. And, you know, it would expand, I would think. So I don't think it's the worst thing if, if an agency double dips, if they can expand their service with that.
I have a problem with them getting extra money, but I think that we need to make sure that the dollars are used to expand services.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And if I could follow up on something Councilman Spatafor asked. With regards to, as an example, the consultation meetings, how are we soliciting participants in a different way so that we don't have the same group showing up time and time again? Because they, you know, there's quite a bit of privilege, as an example, in terms of being on the city's email list. And so what are we doing to expand our reach? Because again, even as I look at some of the organizations that were represented, some of the comments that were made, it's the same players that we are used to dealing with time and time again. So how, what are we doing to cast a wider net?
Well, you know, one thing that I have to do, I have to advertise in the paper. And we're having a, I mean, the city council is advertising this public notice, you know, in the city paws. But generally, I'll just tell you what I do. Generally, I advertise in the paper, and then I send out to the list that I maintain. And I understand what you're saying about the, because a lot of times it's the same people that are, that are speaking. And so, you know, I can lead a horse to water, but I can't make him drink. You know, I try to encourage people to say things, and it, a lot of times it's the same folks that say things over and over. So I don't know what to do. And I know that this community is not the only community that deals with that. You know, I mean, it's just like the public notices. You can send out notices and then encourage people to attend, but, you know.
Okay. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. So to, to that extent, we have a lot of groups. But, you know, reaching out to constituents, you know, might be a different group, such as neighborhood associations and things like that, who actually have people who are being affected to get their side. Was that done?
I'm trying to think if we, because usually I do deal with the neighbor. The neighborhood organizations are on my list. They are on my list, so.
Because it only looks like service providers have, were in attendance with what's provided here.
Like I said, you know, we can send out notices, and we sent out several notices. I have no control over people who attend. I mean, it's just like when we did for the consolidated plan. All of you receive invitations to the meetings. We had eight separate meetings. I had meetings with the neighborhood organizations. I worked with the LISA, trying to get, you know, people to come to the meetings. I have no control over people attending the meetings. I can send out information. We can post it. We can put it in the newspaper. I don't have any control over who attends the meeting. We've done what we can, and I don't know what else to do.
Right. Oh, absolutely. And, and my other point is, so I want to make sure that, you know, the funds are distributed and people in our community have access to them. So, you know, so I just want to encourage that, you know, if we have this additional money, that it goes in the hands of the people, you know, for organizations that are already well-funded from the other additional ARPA dollars that they perceive. But just to make sure the people, so many people that are needing support and funding, and it seems like they don't have access.
Okay. I will make another concerted effort to make sure that I get these notices out to the neighborhood organizations as well as the, you know, other folks on my list.
And to Councilwoman Spitzley's point as well, seeing with HRCS, seems like they were in attendance. It would be nice to see, you know, collaboration to make sure there's not a duplication of, you know, services or efforts or if there is any, you know, new programs. programs. For example, if we currently, you know, have $10 million worth of funds that are circulating in these organizations, and we have $2.7 million, and these needs that you've identified are still in existence, maybe there's some new opportunity to meet those needs versus additionally funding, you know, the organizations that have been funded at this point.
Yeah. HRCS was invited to the meeting, so they were aware.
Thank you. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. I just, you know, I wanna echo what everybody else is saying about making sure that the money actually gets to the people. One of the issues that, you know, we see here is your meetings are 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., or 9:30 to 11:00 a.m., and the average citizen really can't make that time. So, making an accessible meeting, I think, especially time-wise, would go a long way in helping just the regular constituent be there. On top of that, a lot of these service providers, now when we call them with issues, they say they're full. They can't take on more people. So, them getting more money wouldn't necessarily provide any more availability, any more service actually given to the people. So, I hope that, you know, the concerted effort that you'll make to reach out to people, you keep that in mind, that a lot of these service providers already say that they're at capacity, and so more money would not give them more capacity. That's all I have.
All right. And I appreciate that. Are there further questions, further comments? Seeing none, and again, what we're taking a look at is setting a public hearing for November 14th, which would set us up for consideration, not necessarily approval, for November 28th. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the resolution for setting the public hearing for November 14th, and I believe the date is correct in the resolution. So, with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we really appreciate you being here tonight, Ms. Witherspoon. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I need to attend the 7 o'clock meeting?
Tonight? I don't think so, but what I would do is encourage you to be here for the public hearing, to be able to listen to those comments and take those comments back.
Oh, yes.
We appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else before the body? Seeing none, folks, we are adjourned at 6:23.